Okay.
What's right under sergeant?
I'm gonna call the Rusheville town board meeting to order, just to remind everybody we are live tonight. Required by law next month, we'll give it a full test run tonight. We'll begin with the minutes, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from May?
Prayer.
Oh, yeah. Donnie's gonna say a prayer for me.
There she is. Lord, we ask that you look over this meeting and all its residents, we ask that you take your guiding hand in what's going on in this world and make it right in your name. We ask that you look over the sick and things, we ask that you put your guiding hand and healing hand for Paul Sattler in your son's name, Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Don. Pat's gonna lead us in the prayer.
I plead to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pat. Now we can proceed with the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes from the main meeting? And if so, are there any additions or corrections? During none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of May.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is made by Pat, seconded by Don, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and we'll move right into the treasures report with Megan Reel.
You have written reports, I have just a few things. Number one, our insurance is going up, the health insurance, which it always does every year, about 11 percent, which is 986.62 for everybody. It always does that. That will be effective August 1st. And also Craig asked me about our perf. He asked if his perf and like 50 percent of my perf and 75 percent of Paul's perf, which is all paid out of wastewater, came out of wastewater. And I said, no, it doesn't, it all comes out of general. And he said, well, if it can happen, it would help general fund. So I called SBOA and they said, yes, you can do that. So I'm asking, is that okay with everybody? That I take those percentages of the perf out of wastewater instead of general?
You're already doing it on the pay side anyway, so.
I'm doing it on the pay side, just not the perf side.
Yep.
And the insurance and everything comes out of wastewater in those.
And if I heard you correctly, you checked the state border accounts?
Yes.
And they said, yes, that's acceptable.
They said typically we would see the employer's perf contribution for utility employees paid from utility funds. So to me, that says, that's typical.
I make a motion that we allow the percentages to come out of the wastewater for those three employees.
Don makes the motion that the 3 percent perf comes out of the.
Wastewater. Fifty percent, is it not?
It's our percent, which is 11.2 percent.
11.2 percent.
Just their portions. I'll word it like I said it.
Pat made the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, and I just have, the budget meeting will need to be like the first part of July, so I didn't know if you wanted to set that tonight or think about it or whatever. Doesn't matter to me. This needs to be after the 31st of June.
What did you last year do in July?
Mm-hmm.
Get it done?
Yeah.
Sooner the better. Do you want to try and set a date at this present time, or does everybody want to take a look at their calendars?
Well, we don't have a time to meet, well, unless you want to meet that week of it. Let me check real quick, but about the, first week is the 4th, it's on Friday, I know that.
Fourth of July is on Friday.
Let me check and see what, I think we did it to the.
Well, Don's checking.
I think we did it the, the, uh, third week in July, is what I think we did. I think that suited everybody, because it's right after the meeting and you have your, is that, is that okay?
Does that suit the clerk?
Probably.
So the week of the 21st?
Yeah, do you want to do it on Monday, or you want, so you want Tuesday, or what, 14th, 15th, 16th?
The 14th, 15th, or 16th?
Yeah.
First with primary, sure the clerk can be here.
That's fine.
I'm not gonna do her job. Anybody else have any input?
About the 15th of July.
15th is a Tuesday, right?
Yes.
At 5:00?
At 5:00, that's my recommendation.
I like that one.
You want to make a motion for that?
I make a motion that we set the meeting for July 15th at 5:00 o'clock.
Second?
Second.
Jake's seconding.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Anything else from the clerk?
Do we, do we need to make the motion on that increase, keep the same policy we had before, saving the insurance company?
I'm just gonna move it down here, go.
I mean later, I just thought she said that.
I think we should discuss it tonight, yes. She's gonna need an answer. Megan, did you get caught up?
I'm caught up.
Do you have anything else?
I do not, I'm sorry, that's it.
I want to make sure. Craig's not gonna be here, did he submit a written report?
Yes.
He did.
You guys want to review that now, or you want to move on and review it later, if you have questions you can get with Craig? Anybody have any input?
Do we need to do anything about getting mowing help or anything?
Well, I didn't know what was going on until I got in here tonight with Paul. And Craig hasn't said a word to me, I don't know, I think we probably need to talk to Craig. Does anybody else have input? It's hard to decide what to do until we have some input from Craig.
I think what, what needs to be done, I make a motion that you and Pat get with Craig on summer help or how you need to do that, fill this vacancy while he's off, and give you authority to do that, fill out the position for mowing or whatever needed to be. We have an issue with, in July, we're gonna have to have someone, while we're thinking about it, to do the testing while he's gone. So we need to get that down. He can sign the paperwork, but you just have to have someone to do the testing down there next month.
Do you have any experience with what we've done in the past, or should we allow Craig to?
We probably could get Chad from Rossville, or one of those guys, to just take those samples for that day, or whatever. Probably he's a heavy sampling guy, so. I, I think that, we can, if you want, we can try to get someone for that.
Well, I, I hear your, your thoughts on how Pat and I handle it. There's some parameters we're gonna need to know, how many hours a week?
Twenty.
What are you paying? The board's gotta come up with answers on this. If we're gonna try and hire somebody.
I think the one we did is 13.50 an hour and 20 hours, 15 to 20 hours.
Do we have any part-time pay scale set for summer help or mowing or whatever?
13.50.
13.50.
His water salary.
That's what the salary ordinance is.
Okay. Greg, you had a.
Paul's got some medical issues.
Medical issues. And he is, at this time, all, all we know for sure is he's gonna take short-term disability, which is three months.
He doesn't know what's wrong with him?
Yes, we can't discuss it in a public meeting.
Okay.
I'm sure you'll probably hear something, but it's serious enough that he's gonna take short-term disability for three months. Do you want to make that a form of a motion then?
As, as far as letting you and Pat take care of that issue?
I, I think the motion should include us, working with Craig on it.
I make a motion to allow Roger and Pat take care of the short term that we need to do to fill this for mowing or whatever, and on that, and while Paul is off. The other part of it for July, we, I can get with Craig and figure something out for the testing maybe.
Yeah, I think we need Craig's input on that too, it's, it's his operation. And he may, he may even have some other thoughts.
Him and I have talked to distance, but not, we haven't come up with that. But that was my motion, allow you two to.
Trying to work something out.
Fill vacancies we need right now for this, at least the mowing, that, so he can maintain more, not be worried about it. He's done an outstanding job. He came in at 3:00 in the morning when all that rain and alarms and stuff, and I don't want to wear him down. That was my motion.
Oh, you're talking about Craig, no, I don't want him, can't both ends either.
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion from Don to have Pat and I get with Craig, work with him, look out what's needed during this short-term disability, Paul's gonna be off. And a second from Jake. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Anything else you know over the street wastewater that we need to talk about now?
During all the rain, we did, Craig did keep the plant from overflowing, so that was a, all that rain we had in that, I mean, it happened within like an hour and a half. Yeah, between 2:30 and 4:30, the plant was at max, and by 4:30, it was back down to normal, so he did, he did the right thing, so.
Uh, he's a good operator. I, I also know, at least one day, that I know for positive, when, when this started, Paul was already off, that he came in as soon as the sun came up to try and catch up on some mowing. And nobody told him to do that, he did it on his own. It's hard to find employees like that nowadays. Anything else on streets and water? They will move to the Marshals Department of Josh.
I have a written report in front of you, just a reminder for the bike rodeo this Saturday from 10 to 12, a lot of donations, a lot of new things going on, so just a heads up, traffic down there on Mesa will be kind of backed up for that few hours, but other than that, it'll be okay. I have two things tonight, my first thing is the evaporator on the Durango's out, it needs to be replaced for the AC. It is, I was unaware that I needed board approval, but it just tore down, and apparently I need board approval to get it fixed, I got two quotes for it. It's sitting at Southside Auto Care right now, tore apart, ready to go, so with a total cost of 14.69.
I'm gonna make a motion, we go with Southside Autos to get the emergency repair fixed on Josh's Durango. I'll second.
Motion made by Pat.
14.69.25.
From Southside Auto Care, and Jake's seconding the motion. Any further discussion? Yes.
Is this the second time on this AC, or third?
The first time was due to them putting the in, the third engine in. This time, it's just the evaporators leaking. So yes, the second time, technically the AC's wrong, but the first time was due to a mechanical error.
Would that be covered under the warranty since they did that?
Not anymore. No, the warranty went out last year for full warranty service.
Yeah, we, we started all over new with them.
You'd think that when you get a new engine, you get a new, but no, that's unfortunately not.
Okay.
It'd be under warranty forever. Could be under warranty forever, so.
That's all I have.
Good.
Any other discussion? And I'll ask for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, get passed. Get passed, get your air fixed.
Thank you.
You're gonna be needing it.
Yeah, thank you very much. The second thing I've got is another off-duty employment thing here, I know the Sheriff's Department brought us in on their 931 paving detail. That was approved, however, they are now, Jordan Buckley has asked us to help with the Northwoods Village detail in Kokomo due to something, it's just basically making sure nobody shows up on the lot, that somebody's not supposed to be there, I need more approval for that. But I was hoping that maybe instead of just getting board approval for one detail, that we could just make a blanket okay for if the Sheriff's Department offers us off-duty employment, if we can just do that without asking permission, since it's coming from the Sheriff's Office.
Would anybody like to make a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
Pat makes a motion, as I understand the motion will be that there'll be a blanket approval from the board for any security job available through the Howard County Sheriff's Department.
And for Josh, just to let us know what, what you guys are doing. You don't have to get approval every time, but just let us know what you're doing.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Greg, make a second. Any discussion?
Is there a policy or procedure that you can create?
That's what we definitely need.
Absolutely, yes, so I can draft a policy for it.
So I don't know if we have to make that policy first before we make that decision.
Okay.
I think that the motion could probably be amended to say once there's a policy drafted suitable to the, for the, the board president, we go ahead and allow security work, I don't see a problem with that, Greg?
I have a question, when you do this extra work, you, you use your vehicle from here?
Yes.
Gasoline?
I put gas in the ga, my personal money goes in the tank, gas tank for off-duty employment.
I just wondered, you know, because I'm sure that's.
Absolutely, yeah.
Went through, you know, some people's minds, so.
Absolutely, yeah, personal gas money goes in for off-duty employment gigs.
So these, these extra curricular, you know, projects, what do you do, just go and basically set or patrol or?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it could be a wide variety of things, like the Northwoods, I think it's just roaming the lot to make sure that a particular individual doesn't show up. The 931 details, just sitting in your car, I mean, there also like, could be like a Bobcats basketball game too, where you're in, inside, not in your car, and acting as security inside, so I mean, it's a wide variety of things.
Do you think this is good community service?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because people in Kokomo don't get to interact with us out here in Rusheville too much, so it's also a good agency builder for the ones in Kokomo.
Greg, if it, if it helps answer your question, and I have a little experience with that, I'll even tell you another aspect of, of that kind of a situation. Rusheville's so small that you've heard of like Clickit or Ticket, where the state's gonna saturate, if you're not, or looking for drunk drivers, or in high accident areas. The state has even approved small towns to use officers to work outside of their town where the county works it, because they know there's no place, you know, we're so small, we don't have a big problem with, like that they might have in a certain area where there's high.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to stir the pot or anything like that.
No, I was trying to help you understand.
I just, I know, you know, it could be, people might say, well, you know, they're, they're, they're using our, our vehicles.
Abusing.
Yep, abusing it, and going back a couple sheriffs ago, I think he, or town marshals ago, he did kind of abuse it a little bit.
Well, we had a marshal that was going out of county.
Yeah.
Several counties away.
Yeah.
And not telling us.
I know, that, that's, that's the only reason I brought that up, not for so much my own personal, but.
Sure.
If, if I'm so.
And that's the reason for the approval.
Yeah.
But quite obviously, I think it's, I think it's enough said, if, if the Sheriff's Department's already working the detail, it's probably a good detail, it's probably not at a private party or tavern or something, yeah, it's probably a legitimate security deal. And then you say, what are they doing, and you probably just want everybody else to hear that, but you see officers working ballgames.
Sure.
And stuff, basically you're just being a policeman, but they're hiring extra help so that it can be outside all the time. Visibility stops a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions about it, any other discussion about it?
Is this included, reserves?
No, not yet.
But.
It could be, I mean, it could, it could in the future, but as of right now, no, just the full-time pay, or well, just the paid officers.
And that's in the policy that we're going to look at? Gas, things like that, correct?
Yeah, we can outline all that in the policy.
If, if passes.
I, I think we need a policy before we vote, so we look at what we, what to, yes and ors, equipment-wise or whatever, yeah, more of a policy.
My motion was to allow the Northwoods this time, we, we can work on a policy. My, my issue is to let them work the Northwoods this time. We still need the policy, but my, my motion is just for the Northwoods this time, then we'll, the next, we need to work on the policy. But the Northwoods is going on right now, as I understand, so that's, that's my motion.
And was there a second to Pat's motion?
Second.
And that's why we're, that's why, that's why we were discussing it.
Yeah.
So I can have a policy drafted, or find a policy somewhere by next meeting most likely then? That way you guys have.
As I understood, the motion was amended to have you, if the policy made up, and let me see it.
Okay.
And then I, I will basically okay it until we can get the board to sign it.
Okay.
For just the Northwoods.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. The policy would be for whatever, I mean.
Okay.
But we still, after that, we're still gonna have to approve any new security job that you, you asked to do.
Okay.
Yeah. Am I right, board?
Outside of the Sheriff's Department offering it, correct?
Don, do you have any other questions?
I do.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Everybody voted aye, and Don voted opposed. So the motion passes. What else you have?
That is all.
I have one. Lodge is gonna give you $100 for a donation for that bike rodeo.
Okay.
So Mark Falk has got that.
Okay.
It's either, how do you want it, to you, to the?
Uh, we might.
Either Carl or Lori.
Yeah.
I didn't get with you.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That's awesome, thank you for that.
Can you let EMA know, thanks for the help on the 5K last weekend?
Yes, I see them, I see them two, or Thursday, so I will let them know Thursday.
We had, we had 43 people run on Saturday, so it was a pretty good event for the first one, so.
Shout out to Carl for.
Yeah.
Helping out on that, because I was at Western until 4:00 AM, so.
Don't leave, Josh.
Okay.
EMA.
No new business.
You're next with EMA, no new business?
No new business.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public safety advisory members. Greg, Jake? Nothing, we'll move on. Health Department, Rick Homkus.
Do you have a report?
No, Rick's not here. Oh, Rick's not here. Um. Attorney.
Yes, sir. Uh, working with the county to get Rushville under the floodplain administrator.
Boys.
I know. I got an ordinance I'm looking at. Talked to Greg Sheeline. They're happy to do it, I believe, so. Uh, we should get Megan off the hook. I had no idea she had any floodplain Yeah, experience, right. So, I'm happy about that. They, actually, the county was totally shocked that they weren't covering us, actually. So, they thought they were anyway, so we're gonna get that taken care of. Um, did talk about our, our boy, our guy, Xavier, and yeah, because he's a minor, we can't get the restitution, make the prosecutor do it, so we'd have to file small claims against Xavier and his parents, or actually his parents, I believe.
What was their claim on that?
It was the bit, he had portioned from the bench, uh, his mom, they met once, she, they agreed to put pay. They reached out, and they've just blown us off.
The tabletop.
I know, but I was wondering what, what was the restitution part of it, the pay?
The money?
The amount?
Around four hundred.
That was his part?
His part. I have to look for sure, but around that.
Will the court costs and all that eat up?
Well, that's what I'm gonna talk to Jeremy, because he does all the small claims. See what that, you know, I, I used to be, in the old days, when I did this, we were a municipality, and they'd waive the court cost, they would grant them, but we wouldn't have to pay money in, and then it would be recouped by the court from the defendant. I don't know if they do that, but I'll find out, but I wanted to let, you know, I.
So, we just table that to next.
Right, because I don't wanna throw mon- get money after bad for not, you know, going. And I also wondered about, you know, attorneys, if you don't know, if somebody wants to get a third of four hundred dollars, you know, it's, so there's a couple items that I'm thinking about. So, that's Xavier, just wanting you all to know, I'm out there doing something. And then finally, on, and it's a question, so I understand, Dave's bill for the uh, pride playground project that we're trying to get a grant, um, he does have an outstanding invoice, is my understanding correct? Okay. So, with that, I'm assuming that it is not contingent on getting the grant, that we have to pay him if we get the grant or not, is that correct?
I have a copy of it. I'll be happy to show it to you.
Sure, you can give it to me, then I'll, but I just want, I'll look at it. Because usually we get reimbursed from the grant, because it's not, I've never seen a contingent, uh, attorney fee to get a grant, engineer fee to get a grant, but.
Would the grant cover?
It would, but as you're going through the process, they could say no. And then we have the bill, so yes, and at the end, I expect reimbursement if we get it, but I just wanted to see what in the grant it said about his fee being covered, and I'm assuming it's our obligation, if it's yea or nay, we gotta pay it.
Sure, okay.
But that's my assumption. I mean, I haven't looked at the grant, but it was a question, Megan, I've been in the loop on that, so I just wanted to be able to give you the right answer. Well, I just, yeah, you were in the loop. I got Roger said, there's your name, twice, in there, so.
Check out the highlighted area on that side of the page. And it says upon receipt. Does that mean the money in hand for them?
It could be. I'll look at it. You can go on with your other stuff, and I'll let you.
But don't we have a contract with, is that, that?
It's a letter of agreement. That's it.
That's it.
He has the letter of agreement.
Between, I wasn't, part of the, part of the, uh, park board discussion on that was when they made.
Right.
You were in the loop either.
It was, it was a letter was to Jill.
But that, that was a.
The only question I had, so I, I'm going to verbalize my, my thoughts. Um, I have a copy of the grant. The engineering fee is in the grant. The grant's supposed to pay for that engineering fee. The town had to sign the con- uh, letter, which is a contract, a letter of agreement, because the park board can't sign it, the town had to sign it. The town did, and it says in there, which makes common sense to me, it says upon receipt of the grant. Not notifying that you're gonna get it, or that you've been selected, or wherever that wording might be. That letter says on receipt of the grant that we will pay that.
Yeah, he got five, I mean, looking at it, he got five thousand upfront, correct?
Well, he's been paid five thousand, which is what he was supposed to do to apply for the grant.
Right.
And that states that in there.
Right.
Yeah, so he's already gotten paid.
So, did he send you a different invoice?
I paid him initially five thousand, and then last month, I paid him twenty-five hundred, which was his first invoice. And then after talking to Roger, because I got another one, he said, wait till we find out.
So, so you're saying is that we've paid him seventy-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
I mean, any, the other invoices is for twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
For what?
That is still sitting in there waiting.
Engineering fee for the grant.
Does that engineer?
Hmm, I'm reading it different a little bit.
Go ahead, tell it.
Oh, just because it says an engineering agreement will be drafted, and he's gonna, and he gonna tell you what he's gonna do with the
Yes.
with the project?
Yes.
Isn't that right? And he's just then gonna say, I'm gonna charge you twenty-five on that, but I see it, it's not like I've gotta wait for my money. He's just gonna say, in the engineering agreement, and I, and I am surmising here from that one sentence, that he's going to encompass the project, and then at the end of the day, he's only gonna charge twenty-five grand.
Total.
Total. And that will be in the agreement. I still have a hard, I, I still believe that. That's my reading of it, but.
That's what I'm talking about, the engineering part of it, because it's, as you go along, there's certain criteria you meet.
Right.
And has in the past, you pay so much upfront, then as it comes in, and your plans or whatever, then you pay this amount. And then the next day, you pay this amount, and at the end
Right.
of that grant, that, when you're into the grant, that whole park, the town recoups that twenty-five thousand dollars on our part, am I correct? That's, we've done it in the past.
Yeah.
So, I don't see a problem with giving, paying that invoice to the twenty-five hundred, I, since it as goes, it's an engineering ongoing.
The only thing odd to that is it says you're starting an installment plan of five months. I believe that's what it says, five payments.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, I would have written this differently. I, I am just, on this, I'm using common sense on that the engineering agreement, I believe he's saying, I will put that amount of into the agreement to show you that this is all I'm going to get paid, once the grant is there. But you can make an argument that, yeah, there's five monthly installments. I don't like the way it's written. I'm, I'm purely speculating, so I'm not taking his side. I'm just using common sense to say, I have not seen uh, an engineer, a grant writer, uh, not get paid, if the grant doesn't come through, they get paid to a certain degree. I, he should not be billing much more, because we don't have a grant, and he's not doing his plans yet. I mean, I don't know where he stands on this.
Where's the grant stand?
Right.
The grant stands that it's with the Parks Service, the National Park Service. And they have to be assured that we have done everything we need to do with all the studies that has to be done.
And who does the studies?
Dave.
Some of them have already been done, normally on that piece of property.
All of the studies at this point have been done. And now we're just waiting for the National Park Service to give their okay.
So, is he working on plans? What is he doing now to bill us?
Basically working with the feds. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're waiting on.
Right.
Is, it's basically paperwork, is all he's doing, Corbin.
Oh.
I guess the point is, we don't wanna pay him too much of the money in advance, because we have a lot of project to do.
Right.
The whole thing doesn't make sense to me, and I'm not trying to be critical to anybody, not even Dave, but just, just the letter agreement or contract, or whatever you wanna call it, it's just like, you guys can't start digging yet, or building something.
Cannot start.
You don't have the grant.
Correct.
And you won't have it, you'll be approved or denied by the federal government, is my understanding. And if I read minutes right, somebody stated it might be this fall.
It, it might be.
Might be. We know how, we know how government can be. But, but you don't have that yet, approval or disapproval, from the federal government.
Correct.
You guys aren't gonna go out there and start digging and lay a foundation for, for anything, or build something. But yet, we can, we can pay engineering.
I, I, I was, I was under the assumption, opinion, that Dave got paid five thousand dollars to write the grant, and then the rest of the money was going to come as the project proceeded after the grant was awarded.
Makes sense.
And it was proceeded.
That makes sense.
Doesn't it say that, Corbin?
Oh, I definitely think that you can say that. The total cost will not exceed, including the initial five thousand. Twenty-five thousand shall be payable in five monthly installments. But it's so, yeah, I believe that that says, why I don't know what he spent the five thousand dollars on, and I don't know enough about the project. Um, so, yeah, I don't think, I guess my deal is, don't pay him any, we paid him twenty-five hundred dollars more.
We've paid him seventy-five.
Right, total, right. No more paying.
You're advising, advising us, as our counsel, don't pay him anymore until we hear from you.
Don't.
Until we get awarded.
Yeah, I mean, I need something, I wish, again, I have no idea what he's doing, and I, as you said, I don't wanna diminish his work.
I'm not diminishing it.
I know, as you said, you're not, you said you.
I'm gonna make that in the form of a motion, Roger, that we do not pay Keizer Consulting any more than what we have paid them, the seventy-five hundred dollars, until we know that we are awarded the grant.
In writing? That the grant's, we have something in our hand.
That our clerk treasurer gets word, whether it be everything's email anymore, electronic or paper, that we are, the town of Rushville is awarded the federal money for this playground project.
You got that, Megan? Funds in hand.
So, Jill helped with your understanding, since you were there, and that makes sense. It's just weirdly, I, I don't have, I have three sentences to figure out what.
Well, and, and like I said, my understanding is, that money is in the grant.
Oh, yeah.
To pay that.
But I know we've got, Donnie's right, though. We've got reimbursed in the past many.
You see that a little louder?
You're
Yeah.
You're telling me that there's no question we'll get reimbursed if we have to pay this?
No, with the grant.
It's, it's only the grant.
Right.
It's at the end.
It's at the end.
If the grant's not approved.
Then we eat it.
Then we eat it.
Pat's motion is not to pay anything until we have funds in hand, am I right?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
And I think that that's what he agreed to.
Greg, Greg's second the motion.
I think.
Any further discussion?
I don't. With him, I don't know what amount is, as he goes, what he incurs it cost-wise, so I don't know whether
That's my question.
yes or no, because it, you know, you paid him five thousand dollars for grant, that's done. That's, that's accomplished. The other twenty-five hundred dollars you paid him was for a certain thing, so he put in another invoice for another twenty-five hundred dollars, and it's spelled out. So, that's what I'm saying, you've got an invoice for the town, and I don't know exactly, we don't wanna stop anything, but I understand where you're coming from, and engineering part of it, I know that he's got cost also that he has to pay, you know, and that's why we recoup ours at the end.
Because when we were.
Well, either way.
That's my motion. It stands, until the man's sitting here, he can explain it to us.
Well, we have a motion and a second, we're in discussion phase.
Yep, I'm just discussing.
Everybody has a.
When he's sitting here and in person, which I haven't seen him in person here lately very much at all, when he's in person, he can explain it to everyone on the board. Then maybe we'll start paying his invoices again.
The, the only other thing that I would add to this while we're in discussion part is, is that from this point forward, Corbin, did you get to look at that prior to that being signed?
No.
All documentation providing for grants of that nature shall go through our attorney, so we have a clear understanding with, whether it's a contract with whoever.
Sure, and this is, you know, we dealt with Dave for a long time, and things going along okay, and it's just like Josh asking for blanket permission to do off-duty. We're just revisiting, so I agree with, again, that's two in a row, Don, I'm agreeing with Don. Again, we, on the record, are not disparaging Dave in any way, but we do have to revisit our protocol.
I, I just don't know exactly where that.
I agree with you.
Five hundred dollars, and we got an invoice that's coming off.
I agree with you. That's what threw me off.
We need somebody in person to tell us that.
Okay, now it could be my turn to disagree with you.
Okay.
Um, respectively. Um, Dave hasn't been here since June twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah.
Last meeting, Pat was gonna be talking with you about something.
I did.
And I said, ask him to come
I did.
to the June meeting and have information on the urban grants? There was three or four things.
Playground sidewalk and urban wastewater expansion project.
There's a man that takes notes, and he's not here, Corbin. Now, you, you said he works well with us.
No, no.
I'm arguing with you. He does not work well with us.
Don't argue with, we're on the same squad here.
I'm not arguing.
Yeah, you just said you are. Do not say, no, that, that is wrong. All I was doing was trying to gently say, in the past, how long has Dave been here? Many, many years. I was talking about in the past, and I didn't wanna say, oh, the board's got lackadaisical, da-da-da-da. You want me to say that? No. I was being, I was just trying to smooth on out and say, yeah, we gotta revisit it, Roger. I'm not sticking up for Dave at all. Not at all, so must be.
What I meant to say was debate. Take a breath. I'm not, I'm not mad at you.
Well, you did, well, I'm going, you did kind of.
I used the word argument, I shouldn't, I should debate.
You said the term argue, and that is not what I, I was doing. I was like, no, I was just trying to smooth it out.
But you won't let me correct myself and say debate.
Okay, but debate what? I know where he hasn't been here. You don't have to tell me that. I, so, sometimes my protocol on this stuff is, I gotta be diplomatic. That's all I was doing. I don't take, I'm on your squad. Dave Keizer doesn't pay my salary. I am for Rushville one hundred percent. So, when I do this stuff, it's like, I'm actually trying to protect you guys. That's all, that's all that I was doing.
And I'm trying to protect these guys. I got these guys barking at me because he's not here.
And I agree with that a hundred percent. That was not what I was.
That's why I wanted to debate it.
All right.
That's the other, the thing, while we're talking on that, is that invoice in this, in our docket, the pay, or has it been excluded?
I just have one, one thing for you, Corbin. Is with those invoices, can we maybe add to that as far as his scope of work for those invoices, what we're paying for?
I would love to see that.
Okay.
I'm, yeah, because I'm, Jill cleared it up for me. I, she, you're supposed to do the grant, and it ends there. I don't know. Seems to me like doing the grant, dealing with the fed, should be part of that five grand, the way it's worded.
I agree.
I agree with you a hundred percent. That's why we're forcing his hand by not paying the invoice right now, so we can hear how it goes. That's what I wanna hear about.
I just don't know, Megan, if you have, or, or Pat, if anyone has contact with him, I think the next invoice he does bring to us, I think it needs to have a scope of work, I mean, for instance, I mean, I'm looking at Southside Auto Care, what we're here, it's showing you an invoice of scope of work, what they're gonna do, what we're paying for it. So, I think for now on, if a, if a quote invoice agreement, whatever that is, is going to come to the board, um, we need a scope of work to be paid for, that way we can keep track of that scope of work.
I agree with you. I believe that's been asked for.
And I ask him to be here at this month's meeting, so. At least twice, I ask him to be here.
That's the one I haven't paid yet.
I'm gonna get your answer.
Environmental Studies? Yep. That's the one that's not paid.
This is the one?
Yeah, Don had a question, so that's good that you wanna see that.
This is the one that he's he's built.
That's the one that I'm waiting to know what to do.
Okay, it says Rusheville Community Park Works Environmental Clearance for NEAP requirements. Revised cost estimates and revised LWC boundary maps in coordinate coordination with DNR. So he's he's said four things here, things he's gonna do for this twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's perhaps true, Donnie, but I would think that would go in with applying for the grant. Those are all things.
No, that's different. You've got a grant, we've had grant writers in the past, I think personally. You have a grant writer, you have a grant writer get you a grant, okay? Once you get the grant, then you have, then you have to lay out how you wanna do it engineering-wise. That's a whole separate thing. You can pay any grant. We don't have to have Dave to do a grant for us.
I don't think, does that say engineering laying out?
This is what it says.
He has not provided that to us.
It says a project number twenty twenty-four oh seventeen, Rusheville Community Park and Playground Project. Work on environmental clearance for NEPA requirements, revised cost estimate, and revised LWCW boundary maps, coordination with DNR. This is what he's saying he's doing now for this twenty-five hundred dollars. That's what I'm talking about.
I I will just say that the the layout of the playground was done by PlayPro free of charge. So I I don't know if that's what that's talking about, the boundary of it, um, that was not done by, although he did.
Yes, he did.
He did have a map he gave us.
Yes. All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, will this hold, by not, by holding this up, will this, uh, put this on a hold till he gets paid for these these items is what I'm saying.
I don't know the answer to that. I thought he was gonna be here tonight.
I'm gonna suppose, I don't like to, but Indiana has already approved, the DNR has already selected your grant.
But we had to resubmit a budget because.
It had nothing to do with mapping.
Us to do that and so, um, we have until July first to turn that budget in. It was sent to Dave yesterday, um, and I was under the impression he was gonna be here today so we could make sure everything was okay.
I'm just stating a fact. This is what this here says. Twenty-five hundred dollars come across the town. This is what he's doing. Well, this slow this project.
You wanna know if it was in the docket?
And it was just in the docket when we signed it.
No.
Okay, it's a separate docket. So this bill, this one right here has come across. And he's telling you, he's finding out what he's gonna do for the twenty-five hundred dollars. It's not uncommon for, and I'm not taking no sides, I'm just saying in the past, it's not uncommon for engineers or whatever to take a certain amount upfront, then stop till the project's done.
And he has, he's already got seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-five hundred. He's been paid.
So that's just my, I'm just saying what he's he's billing you for.
Now, just to make sure I'm on track, we're in the discussion phase of a motion and a motion has been seconded, am I right?
Yes.
Do we need to restate the motion so we know what we're?
Pat made the motion not to pay Dave anymore until we are awarded money by the federal.
The funds were in hand.
Greg seconded.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote of approval on the motion.
Aye.
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 One, one disapproval by Don.
Cause I'm not sure on that, that's why.
Motion passes. Let's go back to Megan.
And what are we gonna do for that? How are we gonna respond to this?
I'm gonna wait on him to respond to me. I don't think there's gonna be anything that's slowed down on the project. Everything is done, should be already submitted.
But it has to, the new, you know, it has to be resubmitted, the new budget by July first.
He came to you guys' meeting and gave you crazy numbers anyway. We we fixed all that. So, guys, I think we're in the right here. Let's just roll with it and we'll see how it all plays out because, uh, it's.
Yeah, let let me say this. There was a motion, a second, and we had discussion, the motion passed.
Yep.
The motion was not to proceed with any more payments.
Nope.
Until the grant money is in hand. Somebody said, I don't remember who it was, what's next?
I'd say, how are we gonna respond to him to let him know?
I imagine he's gonna.
Restance.
He'll call me in the morning.
I know, but there, that's not my point. My point being is, is that we get a, uh, uh, invoice for this amount of money, okay? All right, now we paid seventy-five hundred dollars upfront.
Paid five thousand upfront.
Well, there's, right now we're paying seventy-five hundred dollars. How are we gonna respond to him, how he's gonna have to proceed with his invoices or whatever, the amount or whatever to the end? That's what I'm saying.
Don, that question's been answered with this this vote. That answer is no more payment to him on this grant.
I understand that.
Until the grant money is deposited and we have the money.
Well, you don't get that till the end, though.
And that that was the motion and it's passed.
Well, the key, the key to this is if you get the approval, that you know it's okay, yeah, we're gonna get reimbursed on that. The key is getting it in hand and that's all that we have to say, like, oh, we read this.
And we want to.
And it's our understanding, yeah, that that once we get this approval, then you get five, right? You get five payments of five thousand dollars. We mistakenly paid you twenty-five hundred dollars. You got, you mistakenly invoiced us again. Again, Roger, that's trying to be diplomatic on this.
You're just, you're debating.
I'm trying to be diplomatic here.
Right. So I'm trying to help Megan say, yeah, we talked about it, Corbin looked at it, our understanding, we talked to Jill. Just matter of fact, like, hey, this is, but also, right, right. But by the way, Pat, my husband, councilman, needs to talk to you. He'd wanted you here. Then you throw that at him. That's all of it. So I'm with, I'm with you on that. So, yeah, I am one hundred percent.
Yep.
Rushe, town of Rusheville, you know that. So. And I have nothing further.
Uh, very good. We're ready to move on then.
Oh, oh, Corbin, oh, no, did, uh, our.
Don has another question.
Real quick, did we get those filed for that, uh, uh, for the, it's all taken care of, the file for the clerk, for the five acres?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's all I had.
File for the clerk for the five acres. Scott, I'm sorry, could you just explain that to me?
When we did that, when we did that, add that in there, I wanna make sure that.
Annexation?
Annexation, that has already been recorded, so.
I got you.
If we have.
I thought that's what you was talking to me on, on the record.
Further reference on that, whether if we, how are we gonna proceed with it?
Is Mike Kinnable still here?
Yes.
Are you still awake?
I don't wanna get up for another drop to.
You have to, you have to. You're next, Mike.
Okay. I wrote three permits last month, one to Christine Hewitt for a garage at five forty-seven North Union. And one to Karina Hale for a chicken coop at two three twenty-four North Union. And one to White Oaks Construction for a pedro's permit to canvas.
Do you have anything else?
Not this month.
Anybody have questions for Mike?
Just one real quick.
Don.
There's been some complaint about this white oak and I told him, I said that we've allowed that in the past for the committing or the going in with white oak, uh, getting a permit and stuff. That's just the way it is. I don't like it.
You've had it.
Yeah.
How many complaints?
Three.
Three?
Three, and then.
Can you elaborate what the complaints were about?
They don't wanna come to their house. They want to do their own repairs and they do it. Well.
They just don't want them knocking on.
They don't wanna knock them on their door. I don't wanna be disturbed by somebody I don't wanna talk to.
We did, one of them for three twenty-eight, twenty-four, same people came around.
I just tell them, deal with it.
I just wanna know what the, I wanna make sure we didn't have something else.
Interrupting the day, basically.
I just wanna make sure we didn't have a serious problem.
No, there's no, there's no serious problems, just that they complain that they don't wanna knocking on their door.
Anything, anybody here for the Board of Zoning Appeals? Lynn, I believe you're on that committee.
End up tipped by.
No.
No, you guys have a hang business?
That's your report.
Okay, thanks for the report. Tiff, is someone? Nobody's reporting on Tiff.
We missed one.
Uh, Historical Society, anybody? Jan Kohl's there. I don't, I don't see her. Parking Tree Board, is anybody? Jill, you have the floor.
Okay. Okay, um, at our last meeting, we went over the budget for the playground and shelter and ADA restroom. And we had to revise it, um, for the DNR, which we did. It was emailed to Dave, um, to make sure, uh, it would be all right to send it to the DNR. Again, that has to be done by July first. So, um, I guess I expected him to be here today to tell us, but, um, so I'll reach out to him and see if he got it and if it's all right. Uh, Jana and I met today with the Howard, uh, Community Foundation and, uh, asked them if they would care to, uh, give us some more money. Um, one of the reasons being, uh, we had to take some things out of the budget in order to, uh, make it all right to send in, to get us to our same amount of three hundred and basically three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, or three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we, um, we did meet with them and there was a committee and they heard our plea this morning at eight AM. So we, uh, should probably hear from them in a couple days. I'm not sure that they would give us anymore. They they told us that the one hundred thousand dollars they gave us was the highest amount they'd ever given anyone for a project like this. So we're, we're so grateful to them and, um, whether they do or don't, we're extremely grateful to them for that. And, um, that, I believe, is it. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have questions for?
On your, you say your budget, on your, on your, when you do your budget, okay, uh, I've never seen that budget.
Okay, um, Megan has a copy of it and she could give it to you.
Have you seen it? Okay, I'm just curious, I'm just curious that, is it here that I'd like to see?
Put everything on the park, Donnie.
Pardon me?
It's all the park equipment and.
I know, but I just wanted to see what we could do. Maybe we could help differently help with it. If you give me a copy, maybe we can work with you on that.
Sure, absolutely.
Anybody else have a question for Jill?
The what? Oh, yes. Thank you, Jana. Um, we're going to have a Zoom meeting, whatever it is, on Thursday with Duke. And we're asking them, uh, about the light poles for the.
Hard numbers on what it's gonna cost to put poles and power and all that, so just a, just a meeting, nothing approved, nothing disapproved.
Yes, we're just meeting with them to find out what this program they have is like and see if we can get some help there. And and I started to say, what we were asking, uh, the Community Foundation for money for was, um, mostly we wanna put in some more shade structures. Jackson Moro Park put in some new playground equipment and in reading comments from people, the biggest complaint was there wasn't enough shade. And it was so hot for the kids to play and the people to sit and watch their kids play. And, um, we had, that's what we had to remove, uh, was shade structures. We also removed a piece of playground equipment, uh, the dual zip line that we had. And that took away some of the real estate for that playground and less turf. So those are the things that we that we removed and we would like to put some shade. We do have trees out there, but they're just not grown enough to provide shade. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Uh, I believe that brings us to you, Pat, as the advisory member for the Parking Tree Board.
I'm just gonna be with him in that meeting for Duke, so I'll let everybody know what's going on with that.
If he doesn't mind, if I'm not bidding in mind if I be there.
Set in too. Yep, that'd be awesome.
All right.
We're pretty good at light projects.
Yeah, I got engineers on hold.
We'll move ahead to old business. It doesn't look like we're gonna do anything. It was, Dave was the only one we were gonna talk about. So we'll move to new business, sign removal at the interurban, Pat.
I'd just like to take that crooked sign down in front of the interurban building or or straighten it up.
Is that why it says future home?
Yeah, yeah, the Historical Society, so, which it may still be, but, yeah, it's either that or straighten it up, so. I've just had a couple people say, well, that sign's been crooked for two years. Yeah, I know. It just freezes and it's working its way up out of the ground, so I'll get it taken care of.
Does anybody else have any thoughts about that or just tell Pat to remove it?
Just, I'd, I'd remove it.
I think the consensus is remove it.
We'll pull her out.
Uh, town policies, that, that, that's me. I got a couple policies, some things that we were looking at. You guys all have a copy of a website policy. We'll go there first. And, uh, see what you think, if it's something you wanna look at, you want a table. Uh, I'll explain to you what the biggest problem is, is a lot of the things on the website are, uh, duplicated. Things that are, that are outdated. There's things that need to be changed on it, brought up to date. This is a simple policy that allows, uh, the elected town clerk, the town board president to work in unison, uh, to make those changes. As you all know, Rhiannon does our actual physical work with the website. Is anybody to understand that, what I'm talking about, or everybody knows? So this policy just says that we can do that. In the event that we couldn't agree, we'll bring the issue to the town board. We'd like to be able to enhance our, uh, website, make it more user-friendly. One of the things I'm talking about now, I've heard people discuss it on this board, the public. If you wanna rent the community center, the very front page of the website, there says click here. Then it takes you another place, then you, then you gotta hunt, it doesn't, it doesn't take you specifically that. Then you gotta hunt, then if you wanna rent it, click here, you just keep, and you gotta move it two or three times to be able to get to the community center thing to to rent it. It's supposed to be online. A lot of people just come in here and and bother Megan, I'll say bother, it's a good word. And we just wanna be able to to control this on a daily basis without having to try and run a grocery store by coming to a meeting one, one day a month.
The other thing on this is where it says, the town board, town council designates the town board president and town clerk acting together as the only persons who can direct changes to the website. In the event the town officials are not in agreement on the information, this issue shall be decided by the vote of town council. I do not agree with that statement because I think that if there's gonna be changes, it should be brought to the board, not two people, they can't agree.
Every specific little change.
If there's something in there, it needs to be brought to the board.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Anybody else have any input? I know we didn't do this right. We're gonna make a motion, we're just discussing it.
I know.
It's a town policy.
You asked me, you asked the policy.
I mean, we're not doing this right in the form of motion, we're just discussing it.
That's what I'm telling, I thought you were.
We're just discussing it. Anybody else have any input on this? For or against?
I'm for it. She deals with it on a daily basis, so I think if there's anything that needs to be dealt with.
You basically on this, you eliminated the board.
Oh, no.
If you two can't agree, you're making, you and Megan are making decisions for this board. If you two can't agree, then you're gonna bring the board for us to sell disagreement for you two.
You're, you're right on that aspect. This policy would would give us the right to to make that change.
That's why I don't agree.
So the board agrees with it here, would agree to the policy, so we can work on it on a daily basis and bring it up to date. So it's not like the board, you you do have a say. Any other?
I, I don't see where it says I have a say. Only if, the only time I, it says if I don't.
By disagreeing with the policy.
By, by you.
Not voting for it.
By you two not agreeing, then. By you two not agreeing, then you, one of you, then you're gonna bring it to the board to just, to sell that disagreement between you and her. That's what this is saying, am I right?
So, you would get the final say. And then you're giving your say at the start, for us to make changes, that maybe a date needs changed, or, or a sentence needs changed, or a...
But it doesn't say that.
It's a, it's a fine line, every little, every little detail, like a sentence change or something like that, you know, I don't think that has to be brought to us. Something major, yes, but where, where do you draw that line?
Well, that's what I'm, I'd like to find out. Have you looked at the website lately?
No.
Take a look at it.
That's where Corbin is gonna rewrite this to where it's compatible for everybody. He's the wordsmith, so, we're gonna let him, we're gonna let him eloquent, eloquently write it.
So, did we get this website policy from any place in particular? Well, how about this?
I didn't copy it from anybody.
Well, let me, how about if I go and, and see what the website policy looks like for Kokomo, Greentown? Greentown is more...
They don't have one.
Right, so, let me see what they have to say.
Unless it's new, I just talked to them the other day, they don't have one.
Well, let me see what I can find out, right, how about that?
So...
Is that what you'd like me to do?
So, we can table this until next month?
Let me look at the website, some website policies that might give us a little more specific guideline, right.
You're getting an awful lot to do.
I am, I am, but that's what I'm supposed to do.
Uh, the next one you have is live stream policy. Which I have somewhere in here. Same, same thing, take a look at it and see what you think. We have, we have no policy, no direction on live stream. The state law says, I don't know if you guys remember or not, the state law says that we have to maintain the recording of each monthly meeting for ninety days. I personally don't agree with that, I would like to see them archived a lot longer on our website indefinitely unless we, YouTube tells us we're out of room or something, or gonna charge us an enormous fee or something. I see no reason to, to, to get rid of them at all.
I read this, I don't have an issue with this.
So, I'll leave it.
Standard, I, I, you want a motion for this, or discussion, so we can discuss it?
We're just talking about it. Let's see if anybody else has anything right now, if anybody, anybody else have any questions on this?
No, this is, I mean, pursuant to the IC code that we have to have anyways, so, it's pretty...
Yes. It's the live stream law, or whatever you wanna call it.
How did, where, where, where did this come from?
I thought we were gonna have attorney write these.
Ordinances and resolutions, this is just town policy.
I don't have a problem with this, I think it's good.
Anybody want to discuss it further, table it, what do you want to do?
Well, once again, why don't we turn it over to our attorney?
Well, the reason I didn't do that to start was it's just a town policy, it's not an ordinance, it's not a resolution, it's a policy that can be cha, it can change, you can change it next month, the town board can change it whenever they want it, it's just a town policy.
I have no, I have no issues with it, I think it's okay with me, I mean, I, I think we just need to vote on it, I make a motion to we...
I'll make a motion to approve the live stream policy.
Just it, you second it.
Motion's made and seconded, any other discussion? Always in favor of, say aye.
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 There you go.
We now have a...
Question about that?
Yep. Pardon?
I, I'm doing the same thing, and that ninety days, I don't, I can't remember what I'm talking about three months ago, and to keep that up there for people to review, we're going on forward with our business, I, I don't want to go backwards and, and rehash my, that ninety days, I'm, I'm thankful to have that, chop it off and get it out of flow. I'm not sure what the discussion is up there, I think we might hear all of it, but that's just my input from what we're going through.
Well, some of the stuff that I know past presidents have had to do, researching, myself included, for, for half a year, I wish I could go back and see what the board was discussing sometimes eight or ten years ago, and see it, and see it happen. Sometimes the minutes don't really, you, you can do your best job you can on minutes, but they don't cover, I agree with you.
But what I'm thinking of, the law changes every day. But we'll, I'll do something, that law changed.
But you're saying you want to stop it to ninety days, you don't want to go on anymore, right?
No, he said he likes...
I know it to be archived.
That's why I'm saying, so you're in disagreement with what he's saying. You were saying ninety days, fine, get rid of it, I don't want to deal with it.
I tried to make it diplomatic.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying you're against it, you're with the ninety days, and we want it archived, keep it long. So, you're different.
You're gonna laugh, you know, we have five people in, and we get in maybe about four minutes of meetings. My meetings are cold because we have to show up today, we've got some plans. I can't plan meetings next month, so, what are we gonna talk about, I don't know. So, anyway, you know, they, they want us to post our meetings and have it live streamed.
Yeah, pass that one down.
It's kinda useful.
I have one question on this, I just thought of.
Thanks for the input. Dawn, you have any?
Yeah, I have one quick question for you, it says, uh, on sixth, it says live stream equipment for three days prior to the scheduled meeting. I think the statute said it in two, seventy-two hours, which is three days. I don't know if we're gonna run it a day or hour issue or...
What is that saying?
Three days.
And the statute says three days?
I think it's seventy-two hours, though, I think, I'm not sure. So, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it, I just wanted to make, just to say...
I made a note to review the statute, and if we have to make any changes, as Roger said, we can do it next meeting.
I just wanted to...
So, I'll review the statute on the live stream policy.
Okay.
Please first. Please first.
Robin from Food Mart.
Can you go to the thing?
Robert, you'll have to go podium, you need to state your name and address, please.
Robin's not sure he wants to get it.
Robin, from Kokomo Food Mart, one twenty East Main Street, Roushewell.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question about the drive-through, we've been trying to get it. I think I spoke with Dave, also I spoke with Pat about it, and also Dawn, and we're doing everything within the guideline, and just trying to get approval from you guys.
You, have you, have you submitted an application for a permit?
No, but I think I spoke with Dave, I think, the engineer, and he said, I already gave him a drawing and everything, and he already submitted everything, he said, I don't think he said anything about the permit yet, he didn't give us approval yet, so...
I thought there was a letter of denial.
We, I called Robin, or maybe you called me before I could get you called, but I told him that Dave had said that it didn't meet the requirements to do so, and that's where we left it, but now he's here to appeal, basically.
My understanding is Dave said it does not meet our zoning law requirements.
Yeah.
And he would not?
Yeah, he said, I think also he said something about the, the fire truck can't pass by from there, 'cause, something like that. Is that right, Megan? I think that's what he said.
Say that one more time.
He said the fire trucks can't pass by, 'cause there's not enough space.
Right, he was saying, 'cause it said part of an alley, that the, there was issues with cars and
Yeah.
fire trucks and whatever.
Well, I don't know any specific reasons.
Okay.
But he notified us that he was disproving it. He wouldn't approve it.
He didn't.
He suggested that we not approve it, we hired him to look it over.
Okay.
He's done that in the past for us, he's helped us with these bigger projects, that, construction projects going on in town, hang on. So, Dave Kaiser, we, we hired him, he notified us that he would, he suggested we not approve it, it did not meet our zoning laws. We can't help you. You've, you've admitted to me that you never even really filled out an application. Let me ask you.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, is this the drawing that you submitted? Please step up and look at it. I'd like to know if that's the drawing that you submitted.
Uh, yes, that's right.
Okay, now, please return to the podium. This drawing for the other board members, number one, doesn't even state a name or anything of, of a business, an address, a location. There's no, to scale, measurement for hand, have everybody seen this?
No.
I'll, I'll give everybody a chance to see it, Greg, go ahead with your question.
Where, where would the drive-up window be, toward, on the east side?
Right, right, yeah, with the church, right by the church parking lot.
This is the back of the building.
Yeah, right on, on that side. The back of the building, yes, yep.
North side of the building, okay. So, you got the, you got the alley there?
Basically, he's wanting to drive up and down on the alley.
And then where they park their...
Yeah, the church park, yeah, and also I told them, I said, we'll close it on Sunday until the church is open, until like two PM or three PM.
And the funeral home, the same, if there was a funeral going on or whatever, you keep it closed down?
Yeah, we'll keep it closed, yes.
Yep.
I don't, did you get your question answered?
Yeah.
Greg?
I got, I just got a question, oh.
Yes.
Do you really think that a drive-up window would help your business?
It would, yes.
I just, I knew, I'm just curious.
Yes, it would, yeah, I mean, I mean, the thing is, the alley's not even that busy. I mean, this is a busy alley, it's understandable, and there's a lot of space there, that two cars can pass by easily, so...
Because I said that I'm anti-drive-up windows.
Cause all he's doing is knocking on the wall.
Right. Well, I guess, and again, you've got caught in the vortex of the, of the Dave scenario. Again, I would like to hear what he had to say about this, I mean, he told us this, but it seems to me that there's other information that may have been needed.
This is me, this is, this is small town, this is not Hamilton County, this is not Fishers, this is, Robin, I'm for your project. I've measured it out, I'm for your project, so if we vote tonight, I'm voting for you, because you're a business owner in this community, you do a lot for the community. So, I think if, if you think a drive-up window will help your business, which I know you voiced to me what you think about a drive-through window, but the competition, so you think you need to have one, which I'm all good with that, so, I just wanted to...
I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, I'm with the community, I mean, we'll close it whenever the church is open, or whenever there's anything going on with the funeral home, we'll close the window.
Yep.
And, yes.
I personally, I, I looked at it through the, and, and again, I agree with Pat, it's a small business, you know, in a small town, and some of the things that we need to do, maybe the, maybe it's not protocol, protocol number one is to get the permit, submit the drawings to the...
He's knocking a hole in the wall, he doesn't really even, you're putting, you're putting the window in and moving a couple of ballards on your own property, so...
That was my next question, was, is it, does he even have to get it?
He's not, he's not changing the footprint of the, of the facility, so...
That's, does he just have to get a permit?
He's basically putting the window in.
He's not changing the footprint.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm okay with it.
And, and there's eighteen feet from the edge of the alley to the building, am I right, there's eighteen feet, I, I put a tape measure on it, there's eighteen feet. I know I can pass a fire truck in ten feet, so, if there's somebody sitting in the lane, even in a dually truck, you're still gonna have room to get by, so, yep. I say we call for a vote, whether Robin can have a drive-through window or not.
I think we would be more...
He's got something to say.
Lanham Bartley, Roushewell Fire Chief, so, I was approached about this, and I've been Fire Chief eighteen years. I've never even heard of Dave Kaiser until like four days ago. So, for him to speak essentially on behalf of the Fire Department, tell somebody that they can't do something because it's gonna interfere, like, no, that doesn't work with me. So, there's four other directions that we can take, a fire truck out, that back door, the fire station, without even going to the west. So, that's not, what he's wanting to do is not gonna interfere with the Fire Department whatsoever. If somebody who the town board is hiring to do things on behalf of the town board, then they need to specify that if you're going to do things, you're gonna dictate things, they need to be in contact with the people that they're dictating things for. I don't really agree with that. My thing too is that Robin has been a great neighbor to the Fire Department. He has been very communicated with us, he's, supports the Fire Department, he does things for us, helps us out, donates things. So, to me, that, that's a good thing for our community, 'cause, you know, it's community helping community. So, I'm here to support our community personally.
Robin, this question is directed to you, did you get a letter from Dave Kaiser explaining why the permit, or his thought process of why he would ask, tell the, the board not to vote for this?
To be honest with you, he's very hard to get, I mean, I email him, text him, call him.
At this point, I'm making a motion to pass, to pass this drive-up window.
Second.
Now, we're going into discussion real quick.
Now, we go into discussion.
First of all...
Motion's made and seconded.
I think that, for, like I said before, I agree with Pat, that it's a small-town community, that whatever, and if you, some people are in a hurry, Robin's gonna benefit for us here, not only that, I've noticed the character of the business, I've noticed the character of each individual in that facility. I witnessed that he sponsors Little League, he donates and all that stuff, and a huge part of this community. Not only that, I've seen that we're, a kid bought something, and he didn't have enough money for the other kid to buy something, and he said, "Take it, eat, don't worry about it, go get you a drink, don't worry about it." That's the kind of person we need in this community, and it's not gonna be a small thing for me not to, to say yes, because I think that, that this is the type of people we need, type of community, and I commend you.
I have a, I, I just have some more discussion, I'm not in favor or against it, I'm not on anybody's side, I just happen to be the president of the board. I was told that, that the project seemed to be more than what our planning commission could handle. Who, who decided to contact Dave? Huh? Who, who made the decision to have Dave, I don't remember, like, it...
He's, he's our building inspector and all these other things, so, who knows?
Who, who sent?
It was a Mike thing, and Mike didn't know, so, I called Dave.
'Cause he's our...
Go-between.
Our go-to, I guess.
Our building inspector?
He needs to not be our go-to, I guess.
And did we or did we not get a letter from him?
I never saw a letter.
I don't remember.
I, somebody I thought told me that we got a letter.
Did we?
Or maybe we asked him.
I have never seen it. I called him, like, emailed him, text him, called him, he never answered, so, I mean, that's why I called Megan a couple times to, and see if he...
You remember anything about this board being...
I think that, what, what it was is that when we saw the drawing, whatever, we asked Dave to give a reason why, or whatever, and send to him why. I think that's what you're referring to, to that drawing that he submitted to Dave, and Dave told him no, but there was no written communication, is that my understanding? That's what I'm saying, that's what we're talking about.
And then my other discussion is, we, we have zoning laws that allows or disallows projects.
It's a building, it's not even a building permit, I mean, it is...
And now, now I'm told we probably don't even need a permit.
No, because he didn't, and it's just understanding that he didn't change the footprint.
Trying to do, trying to get a little bit of information, I looked at it... I looked at our zoning. And it described stacked vehicles. I didn't even know what that meant till I, till I read it. And, and what it's talking about is how many vehicles might be in line. And our zoning actually states how much room you have to have and how many of these stacked positions you have to have to have a drive-up window. But nobody wants to discuss that. I don't know the whole zoning laws. Hang on, Greg, and I'll get to you. Did you guys want to become the plan commission and issue and deny permits? It's okay with me, but I'm not going in. Uh, we have zoning laws to cover that and that's my comment. Greg.
Like I said, I'm anti-drive-up window, but, but...
Oh, Robin has too.
Donnie brings up, Donnie brings up some good points. Robin and everybody that runs the, uh, the Food Mart over there, um, do a lot for the community. And I, I acknowledge that. Now, what does Josh say about it? You know, if, uh, if there's cars backed up or what's, what's your opinion on it, Josh?
I mean, I, I think that alley's big. I mean, I don't have a problem. Yeah, I mean, it's just an alleyway. And it's gonna wrap around to the front parking lot, so I don't think it's gonna pose a traffic issue or anything.
No.
I know I can fit through every car in there.
I think Corbin said it best, that no permits, no nothing, whatever, it's just...
Well, common sense. How, how are we gonna really have stacked vehicles? I mean...
Unless he's giving cokes away or something.
Yeah, sometimes.
I don't think Robin must do that too often, so...
And zoning ordinance might have been written, you know, with, with information from a Kokomo or from a Marion or, or, right, where it's, where you have that problem at...
Now, if Robin opens a Chick-fil-A...
Right, Zandberg, that's what I was just gonna say.
There you go, man. You're gonna have, they'll be lined up around town.
Right. I mean, I think, yeah. I don't have a vote, I, I...
My last question, I promise, my last question is, is to our attorney. If the board votes and says, "We're gonna override the whole process and vote that, yes, he can do this..."
That's called a variance to the board's zoning appeal, happens all the time. You're not voting...
Okay, that's...
But I don't know. Well, give me a break, too. I did not read this or, you're coming to me right now and I, now I'm taking it as a compliment. You think I'm smart enough to know all this and, but you're stacking. I have no, I have no idea. I'm glad to look into that, but common sense tells me, yes, we are a town. At the end of the day, you guys are the vote and so you can say, so who's gonna complain? If someone wants to complain saying that we voted irregularly or it was unconstitutional or it was void, the people in our community have a right to file suit against us and block. I mean, it's not like we're rogue here. I think it's, it's a great discussion and I'm happy these fellows came. I mean, I, I, but I'll be glad to look at this.
If Robin gets any complaints, I'm sure that he'll work with them and work with us to rectify that.
And I told it, I'll close it on Sundays if there's anything going on in the judge, book, or...
Right, he said you were gonna help with the funeral. There's a funeral. Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I think that we're the town and we have the ability to make these decisions, yeah.
Corbin, all right, say we vote on this, okay? Uh, six months down the road, you know, we go, huh, why in the hell do we do that for? What, what's our course of action then? If we wanted to say, hey, this is not a good idea?
Well, sometimes that's hard to redo. And I'd have to look at off-street parking and loading. It looks like somehow I turned right to that section, so...
Dave, you know it.
Right, I know, it's unbelievable. And I did turn to stacking, so I would see the intent and the scope. There's, in this section, there's 14 pages. And you can't, right. So you can't just read, well, I mean, I have to read the whole part of the ordinance.
Yeah, I had no idea what stacking was. Mike?
I got a question for him.
Yes.
Have you talked to the church?
No, we didn't talk to them yet. I just came to the meeting, uh, talked to you guys. But, um, I mean, we work with the church. If there's anything going on, we'll just close it. You know, we don't have any issue closing it until, if there's anything going on. And I told, and I told Pat, we'll close it every Sunday until the church is open.
Church is closed.
I mean, on Sunday, but...
She said until the church is...
No, I mean, until the church is open, I mean.
Yeah, I caught that too. I, we know what he mean.
Yeah, I understand.
Roger, what are the stack, what are the stacked vehicles, uh...
Oh, what did it, there's a lot. But it, it said, you have to have so many feet for each anticipated, how many stacked vehicles and what kind of business it is, how many stacks there might be with. I think the drive-through has to have, have to be curbed and separated from any other thoroughfare, which obviously can't be done there. Or I don't think can be done there.
Did all those buildings account for the drive-through with the new gas station right over there in that alley?
Their drive-through...
They got their own access to it. It's not coming in through the alley.
It's on their...
They're paving the back of the building. It's off the alley access. But there's eight, there's still 18 feet.
Yeah, it is a lot of space there.
There's 18 feet there.
All these ordinances were put into place, okay? Were we, zoning ordinances and all these, okay? For example, if you were to get, hypothetically, if you were to get a, back then before these new ones, what we're looking at now, according to what we're now, if you was wanting to get a building permit for a business in, say, Dollar General size, it would only cost you five, 10, $20, okay? In essence, or McClure's, okay, on those things. There was no structure or, it's too vague, so we met, and met, and met, and met, and met on these things. And some of these things don't fit our criteria as far as a small town. Some of it, but when you do on that there taxation, you, for example, uh, from five to $10, that brought in for our part, $20,000. Time you figure all the footage, correct, Mike? So you went from $5 to our old ordinance to letting the business come in here, to actually bringing up the standards that you have to uphold, where we get that, same way with McClure's and Dollar General and, uh, whatever. That's some of those, but some of those things are, are, in my opinion, the ordinance are exceeding, like, well exceeded what we, our intent was.
And also this has to do with parking, which, I, you know, that's a zoning, but you always have the ability that if something is dangerous, you have the ability by statute, separate from the zoning ordinance, to, you know, people change speed limits all the time, following the proper protocol, vacating alleys. You are the ones to maintain the streets and the parking. So I think that if things aren't going well, then sure, you can go to them and say, hey, this isn't working out.
And also, I'm sorry, uh, also I spoke with Pat, uh, if there's any, like, something wrong with the street, like there's something going on, we'll pay for it. We'll, you know, we'll, you know, we'll get it fixed, yeah.
Yeah. Like, you know, I don't have a vote, but I, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
But I will be glad that, that this is quite in-depth.
Extensive.
Extensive, yes.
It's pretty close to the airport, isn't it?
It's a, it's a good guideline.
So...
It, everything is, there's lots of gray area there.
I just, I said I had, that was my last question. I have one more, Corbin.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you didn't even let me ask my first one, but... My second one is...
I didn't have an answer to the first one.
I'm not sure there is an answer.
It's stagnant.
We do have zoning ordinance. If, if we, I'm not even sure how to word this, but if we allow something that maybe didn't qualify, is that cause us any grief down the road for somebody else and we set precedent or what? Am I saying it right or...
You have the ability as a board to take each individual case as it lies and yet, just cause you do something once, it doesn't set it in stone.
That's my question.
Yeah, that is not, yeah.
Any other discussion? Do you have the motion there, Megan?
Yes.
I have a motion by Jake and a second by Greg to allow them to put in the window.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, who passes?
Thank you. Thank you so much, guys. Thank you.
I have...
I need for a jury.
Get that hole knocked in the wall. I can tell you we're sweating up there a little, so... Just don't be giving out free cokes and cigarettes, so...
I have, uh, comments from guests. Any guests wanna make a comment?
I know Lynn does. She's been back there to...
You're afraid you get tired and feathered if she got up and took more time?
Yes, sir.
Comments from council members.
I'd like for everyone to keep calling his prayers, all the councils, getting to his time of need.
Well noted.
Roger, I think I can answer your first question. And our plan commission, that's just an advisory plan commission. We can always overrule them, always.
Never heard that.
Yep.
Good.
Yep. So see, I kept looking.
I was gonna say that, but I didn't want to, you know, like I was smart or something.
Nope. I would've had to agree with you for the third time, Donnie.
Because...
Right.
This board can override anything. You have to come before this board on anything.
As long as we don't supersede state law, right?
Well, sometimes. We don't care too much.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hey, I do, I wanna say one thing.
Oh, comment?
I've been in contact with several, this is not for me, this is me personally and the M-Bet side. I've been in contact with the fire department and several other organizations. Turnabout, RCO, um, we're looking at an all-day event next year, June 6th, 2026, for an all-day, fire department, probably gonna have a fish fry, um, all-day farmer's market, a 5K in the morning, maybe the bike rodeo throwed into that. So it'll be, maybe we'll try to get the stage out of Kokomo. I don't, you got a contact for that, don't you? And then get music all day long and just kinda make it an all-day fun community event, so... We're kinda spearheading that.
Let me know.
I am.
Mason for being involved.
Yep, you guys do ice cream. How about that?
Okay. We can't make homemade ice cream anymore.
Is that a Saturday or Sunday?
It's a Saturday.
Okay. I will, I will say this, um...
I checked with the school.
I believe that's the year that graduation's gonna be moved to Sunday.
Why would you do it on Sunday? On the Saturday?
Twenty, twenty-seven.
Change it.
Hey, hang on, hang on. Pat said he checked with the school. Let's hear what you got to say.
Yep, 26, it's still gonna be in May. And 27, that's when it gets moved out.
Yeah.
It's still gonna be in May, but will it be on Sunday?
Nope, I don't think so. It's the 31st.
Okay.
I just looked at that schedule.
I thought it said the 31st. Yeah. Twenty, 27, I know, cause I, I was talking to Lexi about it and she pulled up the schedule, the school schedule or whatever, and she said 26 is good, but 27 is when it rolls out, so... I hope that's right. I know you, you're on the school board.
Well...
I, I saw that.
I, I, I just know, and the reason for it is because of this state, uh, kids participating in state events like track and field and different things, and so they miss their graduation. That was the reasoning behind it.
And the big thing is, is if I can get the money raised, I'd like to put on a fireworks show. So I think that's something that this town could, so, and we have a contact for fireworks.
We know the, we know the fire chief.
Put 'em out.
Right.
Set 'em off back in the west side of the cemetery and you'd be able to see 'em from down here, so...
Don't violate the fireworks ordinance.
Yeah, takes care of that.
Do we have one?
Yeah.
Yep, we do.
Hey, we had to revise, actually, we had to revise that.
Yes, we did.
Yep, that's exactly right.
There's a motion, a second to adjourn.
Aye.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First time ever, but...
Take it. It was down here both, but I think...